I'm going to call a zoning board of appeals meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Our custom is to begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag and then we'll follow that with a moment of silence for our men and women in armed services.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands for nation, for God, and for the vision of the greatest justice for all.
Thank you. Just the Zoom, we have a couple people here on Zoom, so just the format for that is that people on Zoom will remain muted unless they're called in by Shana and themselves and speak at that time. That doesn't go necessarily for Chris Nadle.
Right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, can I suggest you turn the cameras in the boardroom on? We can't see your smiling faces online.
Sorry, there you go. There we go.
There you are.
Okay, we have no continued public hearings. The first new public hearing is Brendan Wood, property owner at three, five, six, eight County Road sixteen, requesting two area variances. One is a side setback of four point three feet, one twelve feet is the minimum. A seven point seven foot setback requirement of variance is required. The second is a front setback of thirty-four point eight feet, and sixty feet is the minimum. A twenty-five point two foot variance is required. Yeah, and the way these hearings will go, the applicant will present their particular situation, why they're requesting the variance. You know, any supporting data that you have for the variance. When you're finished, we can ask you questions. When that, after that, we will ask for any questions or comments from the audience here and at home. And then following that, we generally will, if it's okay with you, we would close the public hearing tonight. We do have sixty-two days to decide on the, on our, on the variance, but we almost always are doing it the same night, so. I'm going to get started.
Thanks, guys. Nice to, nice to see you. So a few things that I wanted to explain here, I think probably aren't immediately evident, even with the map that's up there. So we've owned our house since two thousand fourteen, and what's driven this primarily is the safety issues. So the topography here is probably the closest indicator to that, but if you, I know a few folks here live down the road from us, and if you wanted to take a look at it without driving by, you can also see it from like Google Street View and that sort of thing. But our driveway is very steep, and we've had a couple friends and family fall and concern about people getting hurt, really, you know, elderly family members and that sort of thing. So that was really the underlying concern or driving force for this, that you can see from road grade up to where the existing single car garage is. It's about a ten-foot rise over the course of about fifty feet, so it's pretty steep and it gets very icy in the winter, even with village insulting and shoveling and that kind of thing. So that was really the foundation for why we wanted to take a look at this project. And in the course of that, it lets us reconfigure a couple things with the house and effectively add a two-car garage, basically at and below grade in front of the existing garage there, which you can see on the northeast corner. We tried to incorporate, and Mr. Muller here is our architect, so we tried to incorporate design for this to not impact anybody's view, try to make it as minimally intrusive and mesh the local neighborhood and that sort of thing. But the two variances that I'm requesting here are, the side setback is a difference of about four inches from the existing house on the north side. And the projection of the garage toward the road still allows us about thirty-five feet, one for a proposed turnaround, being able to pull out forward into the road there, which we try to do anyway. If you guys are familiar with the section of West Lake Road, we're just south of the Yacht Club, and the inside of the curve there is kind of questionable. So we've, as part of this plan, have tried to account for that, to provide as much visibility and, you know, safety of access and that sort of thing as possible. But that's really, so the major change to the existing house, like I said, is about four inches different from what I'm requesting for the side setback and the front setback. The front of the garage, if you want to visualize it there, there's some other documents and stuff that reference this in there. But where the garage comes out to is the, is the second line on the topo there, so kind of the inside curve of where the existing turnaround is. There are quite a few houses, especially south of us, that are closer both in the side setback and the front, that I provided as reference in the application to. But that, that's basically it unless you guys have questions.
Shana, are you aware of our, a lot of those, I think, are pre-existing? Will call any variances we granted for similar setback?
Well, I haven't, no.
I think it's been.
Brendan, is there anything you wanted to pull up till the right time?
Uh, the, the application, I've got a list of pictures of a few of, from Encore, and there are a couple recent ones immediately south of Butler that were built or expanded within the last three or four years.
Shana, is there anything that shows us the new from the existing? Because I've driven by there, I drive by there, two, three, four, ten today. And one, I didn't see our notice up in the front yard today when I drove by. And two, I can't tell from the drawing what's new and what's existing. And you all know my experience, I can't, I still can't literally just tell what's new, what's existing, existing or proposed. Is on.
You want to pull up Encore again, yeah?
Yeah, there's also the proposed, the proposed plan from the initial submission in early December.
The elevations that you're looking?
Well, do we have anything with this, do we have anything that's dimensioned?
This is a photo from the week.
Yeah, there's a proposed addition site plan, that's, I think from the twelve seventeen submissions. Because this is all the system that's there.
That is, this is one.
Do you have a, a view further north coming from the side, from the lake side there? Like, I know we have that lake photo, but it'd be nice to see on the north side of where, where the arrow was pointing to.
Is this an addition on the end of the house?
It's on the front northeast corner. Yeah, so where the existing driveway is, it consumes, she pulls up the, there's a site plan.
Well, this one is the, this is the existing. Do you have anything that shows us the new?
Yeah, there's a site plan that's part of the submission.
So what does it point, then? That's the house across, right? Is that, or the boathouse?
Yeah, that's ours across the street there.
Okay.
We have someone around here. East. Very interesting. That's your existing.
Yeah, I think if you look at the twelve seventeen twenty-one site plan, that'll show the overlay on, as the proposed addition.
Oh, I see. So there's something being removed? Is that, well, that has to be removed. I was confused by that.
There's, Shana, I think there's three pages in this one if you scroll down.
Yeah, there's one that shows it's.
Yeah, the bottom, bottom of this shows it, and then there's also an overlay.
There's one where half the street, it's.
The most recent submission, which I think is the one from four fifteen, also shows it. Second from the bottom. That's structural. I think if you do the April fifteenth, twenty-two plot plan. Yeah, so this, this shows the proposed addition and shaded gray. It's basically consuming part of its existing driveway out, out toward west side there, from the west side. You see, it's effectively existing side setback, but that's a little bit, and so it brings it about four inches closer at that, at that northeast corner.
And the top of the new garage is basically at the same level as your current first floor?
Yes. Yeah, and the proposal for that is, is basically to deck it so it's flat and doesn't interrupt neighbors' line of sight on the north side since the block was placed there. These both, immediately north and immediately south are same plans to, like, well, there.
Shana, do you have an aerial of the area that would show how close other homes are to the road?
It's the last page in the application packet, Shana from December, I believe. I've got a couple dozen of them.
Were these on the file for the, this case today?
Yeah.
I didn't find it.
I just heard a ding from it.
These are hard to see. I can pull up, why don't I pull up Encore?
I meant these plans were on, on the worksheet today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had to scroll up on a couple of them.
How does this addition improve on your slope problem?
The driveway is effectively a grade, so the elevation rise from road shoulder to new garage floor is only a foot. So it's thirty-five feet deep, you know, it's ten inches to a foot rise versus the ten-foot rise that we have now. The new garage is effectively at the level of our basement, which is by the majority of the submissions at below grade. It's basically digging into the hill. The, the top of the plans that she had pulled up there shows what it looks like from the road, and you see it's basically below where the.
I'm just looking at the, you know, with the topography of it, it looks like we're coming out far from where.
It's, yeah, we, so through the process of this, we looked at potentially adding a garage in back instead and trying to, I mean, the backyard is. We rise seventy-five feet from back of the house to back of the property, so it's a place that would be prepared for the whole parcel.
I was just wanting to see if there were other homes or structures as close to the road as this structure is going to be?
Yeah, as you start to scroll south here, so the half thousand properties north of Butler and then quite a few south are. A lot of these are also bisected properties with the houses on the lake side, like, well, we have a detached garage across, and a lot of those are, are sort of closer there.
Your northern neighbor now is a little bit closer, but will be a little bit back.
Yeah.
Yeah, they actually, the apron from both driveways on either side of us is on our property too, from the existing driveways. Like, the neighbor immediately south is about six inches off the property line. Lazarus, the, the back seven two.
Have you reached out to the neighbors?
Yeah, so the neighbor immediately south sent an email in support of the plan to the town a few months ago. And then a neighbor to the north didn't send a letter, but we, I went through the plan with him and talked it through and stuff already, that's, that's just, that's not over occupied, so that's a year on rental, and they have a few houses on the.
Now, on the northern side of the, well, I guess both sides of the driveway, there's going to be kind of a bank down of wall.
Yep. Yeah, so this is proposed, I don't know if the plan is still up there. It's, it's, so we rehabbed the lake side of the property three years ago. And then split face CMU, so concrete block with a kind of nicer looking face on it down there for the retaining wall and same, same approach for this. And it's kind of stuffed because you can see down at the roads, it's basically a road model. And it comes up, and we're basically digging into the, digging into grade to be able to place the garage below the first floor of the house there. So it'll be a stuffed, stuffed retaining wall if that's what they say. It gives us an opportunity to, and I probably should have mentioned, like, it's just an opportunity to address some drainage issues too, because we in several houses along us have surface drainage to run off from backyard and rooms and that sort of thing, and they run down the driveways across the road. So there's a lot of bonding and stuff too, we have here, it's like we had earlier today or yesterday. So it's going to let us mitigate some of that down into the mid-adage line that's side of the road there too.
Did you keep the turn?
Yeah, yeah, we'll still have a turnaround to be able to pull out. If you're familiar with the section of it, so it kind of curves around this way. We've worked with the neighbors in the north a few times to trim the trees up and stuff too, because the line of sight is not very good past the location for the sanitary area. So that's part of it, we, we wanted to be able to pull forward instead of trying to back out, it's pretty, it's pretty dry.
Any other questions?
I just had the, the one going to the town site and what Chris Jensen had to say. He had some criticism, and I was just wondering if you answered that in writing or if you had a response to what he had said. Are you familiar with, talking about from January twenty-sixth, architectural plan does not have boundary or reference to boundary, that kind of stuff?
Those are all, those are all major.
Well, I didn't know. Okay, I didn't, couldn't tell.
Yeah, we, yeah, my, my initial submission didn't include an instrumented version of the site plan, so I came back and resubmit. But so the most recent submission from mid-April is from our surveyor and civil engineer that's a formal.
Okay, I missed that, and on the.
I was confused on a couple of the two.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, that's why I was like, why is there a line drawn across?
Yeah, the part of the concern was because it's close on the north side, wanted to know exactly what the, the final, you know, distance would be with, with that addition there. Like I said, the house is a little, it doesn't, it doesn't quite line up with the property line, which seems to be typical for down our way, but. So it brings it a few inches closer there, but this is the official shot that they took though.
I noticed on the one photo, it looked almost like, so your addition brings it almost maybe parallel to the north property? I mean, the, because their front is actually closer to the road, correct?
It's, it's pretty close, so existing, I think, is four point eight feet or something, and then the addition is at four point three.
Or is that turned?
Yeah, it's, it's a difference of four inches with the.
Yeah, I was trying to use the corner, or the corner there, so. Looked like it was closer.
Yeah, it feels like down by us, a lot of the lines were established after they built a lot of the houses.
That's my neighborhood too. I don't own my driveway.
The old part of the neighborhood and the old part of ours, and it's, it's got a lot of boundary greens and place area.
Could you run through that one more time about the drainage? I, I mean, I appreciate how steep this is, and you're, you suggested that with this addition, the drainage issues could be less rather than, than better.
Yeah.
Could you explain that again?
Yeah, so the prior owners did some, did some water mitigation stuff, so there's kind of like a skirt curtain drain around the back of the house. So the house is built nineteen thirty-six, and there's, there were clearly some water issues in the baths, just the way it looks on the inside. So as part of that, they did a strain and did some downspout ducting into the foundation of the house. And the stuff that is deducted into the foundation runs down the driveway, across the road, and then washes out gravel and stuff on the opposite side. So it's either surface drainage from the roof or from the backyard, I mean, you can see, you can see the fish there with the topography, but. Part of the plan for this is to, is to bring in all of those downspout tie-ins, including the ones that go into the basement today, and the ones that are surface drained down the driveway, and tie those in. We've got a, there's a little gravel parking pad here right now, and a dish there for, for stormwater that exists today, and we'll bring the drainage hall into that from the whole house and backyard. This, part of that is contributing to the ice issues we have with the driveway today, where I'm wondering if there's a little bit of out. It, that's immediately an issue, right?
Any other questions? Probably open it up to the audience here and there. Any questions anyone has on this request? Anybody at home? Brendan, do you have anything else you want to add? Are you comfortable with us closing the public hearings at this time?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I stand if there's any follow-up or something, that'd be, that'd be a good thing.
Yeah, once, the general procedure is, once the public hearings close, we can take no further information at the end.
Okay.
At the end, we'll, we'll be discussing things among ourselves, and you're welcome to stay, but if there's not any further interaction after that, yeah. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. You're welcome to stay, and we will vote within sixty-two days. Hopefully, we'll vote tonight.
I'm going to, I'm going to coach soccer, so. Thanks, guys, everyone.
Okay, the next public hearing is Tony Petri, Petrazo, Petrochoni, owner of three thirty, three thirty, three, three, five, four, County Road sixteen, requesting an area variance, a side setback of one point six feet, one ten feet is the minimum. Eight point four foot variance is required.
Excuse me, I'm missing your name. No, that was actually pretty good. I've never seen it, but it was not work. Yeah, thanks for taking the time. I am, the variance that I'm requesting is for a gravel pad to the north side of my property and directly alongside the existing garage. So. Okay. Yeah, so in this picture, actually, the shadow of the snow and a pile of lumber is basically where the, where it would go. And I have a drawing in the, but it would basically probably be there and tie that into the existing driveway. The reason I'm doing this is I have three vehicles, one's an electric vehicle, so it has nowhere, it has to be parked in front of the garage. I have a truck that I use for construction on my full properties, and then a significant other that has a vehicle. So I have three vehicles. I've found that maneuvering vehicles around with only two parking spots proves difficult, and I end up with a lot of, as you can see here, all those sideways, I end up with ruts. So the proposed space is this gravel here, so that I'm able to get there. There's a few reasons. The one is, as I mentioned, the electric vehicle kind of prohibits, it makes it so that my car has to be there. It makes it a bit difficult to move vehicles around. It's also for access to the back of my property, potentially. I would, at some point, I may consider being able to get back there for another project that I want to do with solar, right? That's, that's for the future. And, but primarily for parking at this point, and not tearing up my vehicle as I go around. So you can see, this isn't as fancy as Brendan's drawing, but it's the gravel part here, which is a little bit difficult to see, but that's the gravel that I would be adding. This is the property line. So looking at the neighborhood, I went forty houses down from, my neighbor is all the way down, down the street. I stopped at forty just because I got tired of it. But of those forty vehicle, or forty houses, eighty-three percent of the homes had a driveway that was well within the ten-foot setback, side setback. Fifty percent of those were actually touching the neighboring property, including my neighbor to the north here, whose driveway is actually slightly into my property. So the precedent is there. I think that covers most of it, so any question?
So it would be gravel.
So. Yeah, I would hire Amis Enterprise to put in that, the gravel, yeah.
Of, of the properties you researched that were close to the line, how, how close is the neighboring property? Or how, how, the structure, like their home?
Uh, well, it varies. We can see just my neighbor to the south here. You know, their property is well setback, the, the driveway itself actually comes into my property.
Yeah, well, they, but there's like more distance between the two. I was just curious to see how close the other, you know, like, how many of the other properties you researched, where the, was the house built closer? You know, like, how, because, because I think there's going to, there was a, a letter stating, you know, the potential noise issue or inconvenience starting your vehicle.
Okay. Uh, there's certainly, I mean, it's West Lake Road, so a lot of those houses are quite close. I didn't, I didn't think to look at specifically.
Reason you can't bring it around the south side?
Yeah, so the way that the grade is, the south side is almost always, well, first of all, I've filled this porch here with the tree there. I would probably have to cut down this tree. But more importantly, it's almost always wet back there. In fact, I have some ruts in my backyard trying to get back there. It's, the property leans all the way, you know, kind of grades from here to the bottom corner there, so I have to stay on the, on the north end of my property with anything that's heavy.
Oh, we're still, we're still at ten.
Oh, yeah.
It's bad too.
It's close if you're in trouble, but.
Yeah, you're up.
Yeah, it's maybe a mile past. Yeah, it's maybe a mile past. Not bad, man.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that was a, you don't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, so my property line actually touches this bush right there.
So this is the tree.
Right.
Yeah. And as you, actually, you can see where I've, in this picture, where I've tried to get around there. And that's when I actually got my truck stuck back there and winched it out.
It is pretty tight in between the houses there.
It is. Um, with the proposal, there's a good portion that's actually within the ten feet setback because the property, although it looks like, you know, the interesting part of my property actually comes right through and touches this bush. So it's, it's a significant portion there. So it's within the setback, hasn't it?
Specifically with the complaints or concerns with the, the neighbor, um, how would you answer that?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the difference of eight feet. Um, you know, the, the vehicle will either be here or here. Um.
Did, did you see the letter? It just came in.
I didn't see it.
Oh, okay.
Today? Yesterday?
You can, we're, we're.
Yesterday.
Maybe we should put it up.
Yeah, we should probably.
Yeah.
Okay, um. I mean, I, I don't think, John, your setback is relevant.
Right.
I mean, that's, the fact that you have the seven foot setback isn't really.
Well, it addresses the fact that the houses are closer than you would think with the ten foot and ten foot setback.
Right, but here is seven feet doesn't, isn't my, yes, you know.
Well, I mean, I, when I.
Yeah, any, any, any discussion should come to the board.
Sure, okay.
Not, you, okay.
Sure.
So any, sir, if you'd like to go ahead and, you know.
Yeah, let's stand up and ask some questions.
Sorry.
Yeah, just for a second. We'll call you back up after.
Yeah, we'll call you back.
So I'm John Alba, so I live directly to the north in the property. My wife and I, we were not contacted by Mr. Petrochoni. Forty houses down the street, but not us. We're the ones that really are impacted with this the most. We just have so many issues with this, with us. I mean, relative, relatively speaking, it would move a vehicle within eighteen inches of our lot line. And I, I made a comment, you have the letter, I hope you get a chance to read through it. I'll just roll real quickly. But having a vehicle in a ten foot space isn't just ten feet. Um, and I referenced this, I went online, I did a whole bit of research. A truck, truck like Tony's or myself is about seven feet wide when the door is closed. When you open one door, it had three feet. When you open two doors, it had another three feet, you're up to thirteen feet. So the feet parks the car, the truck, within a foot of his hatch, uptight. And he opens one door, he's out over the ten foot boundary. So if there was a fence there or something, it just, it wouldn't work. Just, that part's impractical. Having it so close brings up a safety issue. We have grandkids, we have four right now, under five years old. And they, you know, will start to come over. My oldest grandson's been over last year. Having a full-size motor vehicle ran close to the house, this was an incredible request. My wife, we landscape out there, we're moving around that, that side of the yard. There's quite a bit of landscape down our property. But I want to make one point that the bush that he pointed out was not on his side. So.
It touches it, though.
Well, it's not on your side. So along with the safety issues, we, um, we do our own landscaping, but we contract out the lawn. And they use full-size zero-turn mowers and they cut to the lot line, you know? So having something running that close to a parked vehicle, I'm concerned there may be some damage or some interaction going on. But we might not want to be responsible for that. Uh, as far as the noise issue, let me address that real quickly. Having a vehicle parked in front of your house in the driveway and it's running, that's one thing. But when you take that same vehicle and you move it in between two houses that are close together, you get this resonance and echoing going on. And it's not hypothetical. It actually happened one day when Mr. Petrochoni, uh, he had an early appointment before five o'clock. He started his truck up, it was parked there on the side. And that's what made the ruts. And it woke us both up out of the sound sleep. So that's not a theoretical thing that actually happens. The volume seems to be amped up in this place. So it's the, the noise, the safety issue, I mean, that's the biggest concern for you. So I just, I wanted to, again, I apologize for the crummy drawings. We're done with pencil, old school way. But I wanted to point out what the actual footprint looks like and the actual usability of that proposal was, the fact you have to take in consideration opening closely to the bush.
And can I add the wetness issue?
Yeah, as far as the wetness issue, um, we've been there twelve years. We built the house. Because of Ferris Hills, all those properties are wet. Doesn't matter north side, south side.
They're all wet.
And to, um, address somebody on the board's point about the other side of the house, um, his neighbor to the south, they have a really large setback from their house, from the road. And there's a driveway that runs down there. To me, practically, it would make more sense if you needed to go in the backyard, go that way. And then I think lastly, there's an existing turnaround that the applicant's driveway. And why not just widen it? It would seem the simplest thing to do. It would seem the most practical and most effective way to go.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
From a practical standpoint, if this variance is denied, there's nothing stopping him from parking his truck there anyway.
Well, I think there is. I talked, there's a, there's a part in town code that says you can't have any vehicle on unpaid service. And I have the number, I just don't have it.
Is, is it like a period of time or I don't?
It's covered.
Cause I mean, there's gonna be a day, I would assume, sometime, you know, you move something, park it, you know?
Well, yeah, me, yeah, I know, free day.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I decided, I understand the question. Yeah, but that's, that, I think, I talked to somebody upstairs, actually Jean Christman, she pointed me to it. And Jean said, that's to stop people from parking RVs and boats and that on the lawn. So.
Sean, is that the, is that the code? Is that the?
Well, it, it's.
Well, we don't allow, you have to have pure driveways, um, per se, but I need to look and see if that's probably a maintenance thing, but that's, that was something that I can look into it.
I think there's like a timeframe or something. Like if you're literally considered long-term storage or, yeah.
Well, I understand. I mean, I'm, I would, you know, I wouldn't be real happy if somebody parked a RV, you know, eighteen inches off my property line. But I, I'm just curious what the town codes are.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have any sort of.
I may have an answer. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any?
Okay, it's Ken Big with Tom Code, two twenty-nine, paragraph I. No front yard wherever located and except this may be otherwise provided in Article Five. No rear yard adjoining Kamdigo Lake. Comment shall be used for the open storage of boats, vehicles, travel trailers, or any other equipment except for vehicular parking on driveways. Such open storage may be stored on the side of the building, but not near than ten feet from the rear or side lot line. So that's all, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No one else in the audience here? Anyone at home with any questions? Comments? Um, would you like to?
Sir. Yeah, the only thing I wanted to address, um, of those comments was really the alternative, which I, I did put in my application. Um, I think personally, I think the, the road would, having two vehicles directly in front of the, the house, especially a smaller house, um, to me, that would detract from that, or reveal from that. But I think it would look less attractive. Um, for me, it would be the easier option. Um, but I think from a, you know, from the looks of Westlake Road, I think it would be a, a poorer option as far as aesthetics go.
Uh, with the electric vehicle, is there some way you can get your power supply out more?
Um, it has a twenty-foot reach. Uh, so right now I'm probably about five feet from the garage door that the car has to be backed up to it. It's a, um, you know, a level-two charger, so it's just a plug. But that, that was.
May I add another comment?
Just one second. Any other questions to the board? Yes.
Well, to Mr. Petrochoni's point about aesthetics, there's also a large power boat that he parks in front of his house that he failed to mention. So I think that's gotta be taken into consideration as well.
So the, the power boat was there for about two weeks because I got it from, it's stored at the Kamdigo Yacht Club. Um, I got it out of storage, all excited that it was warm. And then it got from me. I went to store it at yacht club. Um, and it was just mud where the storage is above the yacht club. So I, they told me to wait two weeks, so I turned around and brought it home. Um, it was put back there about half a week ago, a couple of days ago. And that's where it'll stay for the summer. Aside from bringing it, you know, into my yard to clean it and, or into my driveway to clean it, et cetera. But it's permanently stored either off-site during the winter or at the yacht club.
Anything else you'd like to add to your presentation?
I don't think so. I think that's it.
The board have any other questions? Are you comfortable with closing any, uh, public hearing at this time? Close of the hearing, we will take it up tonight. We do have just two days, but we generally will get, uh, discuss the night.
Okay.
Welcome to speak with them.
I'll take my son back. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, next is Mark Muller, representing Michael Skinner, owner of property of thirty-eight oh nine Middle Kesher Road, requesting three area variances. One is a forty-six point five foot front setback, when sixty feet is required. Thirteen point, uh, five foot variance is required. Uh, the second is a nineteen point thirty-three foot setback, when twenty-five feet is required. So a five point six seven foot, uh, setback from the side is requested. Third is a lot coverage of twenty point two eight percent, when twenty percent is the maximum. Point two eight percent, uh, variance is required. Okay. Okay. Just give your name and.
Excuse me?
Your name and.
Mark Muller. And, uh, the Skinners were, they have, the existing house has a very small one-car garage. Uh, and they would like to have a two-car garage. And so they'd like to add it, um, in front of the existing garage. Instead of going further, I love that you drove by and saw the house, it's kind of a long boxcar. They'd like to develop a little more character in the house by putting a reverse gable on, on the new garage. And also to add, to the south, you can see in that picture. This picture. Look at, okay. Um, this area here drops off and there's a drainage well that runs through here between the two properties. And then it curves around and goes in, but I think it's Kamdigo Town property back in here. Um, and so to go that way is, is gonna disrupt that drainage to some extent. Very rough. Yeah, it's, it comes through here and then this is, uh, town property back here. And also makes development, you know, off the side, um, difficult. It would make, actually, the side setback greater than we're asking. So that's kind of how that all evolved. Um. Yeah, you can see here. And al- also, the existing driveway comes right to that, to where we have the, uh, the new garage. So it's, um, there are, you know, again, if you look at the neighborhood, there are other properties, other houses that are closer to the road than the required setback. And some that are pretty much closer to their side lot lines. At least if you look at, like, you have a shot off of Encore that, um, it'll be easy to bring it up, but this has the property lines on it. You pass that around, you know? Look at it.
Can you pull up the Encore?
Side lines?
I did, well, I just had Encore.
Yeah.
It's got a, if I look that up a little bit.
Other sidelines?
Oh, one is the other.
Yeah. For instance, you know, this house is close to the front line. Go further up north, there's about three in a row that are much closer to the, uh, to the front lot line. And, um, Encore's lines are awful. We'll get on, on side light lines, but you can see, you know, very close to the side line. So it's not unusual in that area for, for properties, um, for houses to be closer to either the road or its side setback. The lot coverage issue is point two for, I think, first, and so it's not a major, major thing.
Any other? Do you have any questions? Have you talked to the neighbors?
I have, I have not. I suggested to the Skinners that they do that. And I haven't checked with them. There, there's been, I won't believe any communication from anybody here. The sign's been off.
What did you say, Shauna?
We have not, there's been no communication on our part that we've received from one of the neighbors.
Nor do we know whether they have talked to one another.
Correct.
Right.
Well, they weren't notified by the town.
Yeah.
So you're over by point two eight, is that what it, what it's?
That's lot coverage, yes.
If, if we were not to prove these variances tonight, is there an alternative plan?
No, not that I have, no. I don't know that they, you know, this is what they'd like to do. They want to purchase, um, you know, if you look at this, this garage. You know, if you look at this, this garage comes only about halfway into this section, and then there's living space back, the kitchen, and that kind of thing, so it's not even, you know, very deep, and it's pretty much useless, you know, but it's, so I don't know what they would do, I mean, there's really nowhere to go without maybe a variance of some sort.
So I saw on one of the sites too, that are you removing pavement? Did I see pavement to be removed on one of the things that they were, that was pulled up?
Yeah, I mean, the garage comes out to about in line with this part of the pavement, so this triangle certainly is going to be removed, you know, because it's useless. Right now, it's just a whole round to get to that spot.
So that's part of the lot coverage equation?
That's all in the equation, yeah.
Where that car is sitting, if that were removed?
I don't, I believe they wanted to leave that there. Yeah, that's, that's this one, this is that triangle between. That would all be wasted by the construction anyway, so there's no reason to...
But I guess is that could be even accessible from the driveway with the garage in front of it?
It would not, no, there's a retaining wall, actually, like a timber retaining wall right here, so that's where this, it starts to drop off right in here, and so really, again, now they're only accessible to back here, if they had any reason, the back would be on the north side.
Again, that piece of pavement?
It's going, as far as I know, it's going to remain, that's what's considered in the...
Yeah, but I guess, do they really need to retain it if you can't get to it with a vehicle?
Well, if they could put a, I don't know, lawn tractor there, or furniture, stuff like that, I guess, it's not very useful to, because that retaining wall was there, to do anything with it.
I'm just saying, if they, you know, took that pavement up and just put some grass there or something, that would get rid of the variance.
Relative to that point, Shawna, I have a technical question. Well, we just heard a variance request being brought before us because they were going to build an asphalt driveway too close to the property line, so it's wet.
Stone, gravel.
Gravel, whatever, I don't care, gravel, pavement, they're going to build it too close to the lot line, so there's a side setback issue. This property has existing pavement closer to the property line and lot line than this new parking garage is going to be, but yet, we're telling this applicant that they're building this too close to the property line, but there is already pavement within that space currently, which is the exact same condition as the case we just heard that was coming before us for a variance. Why are there two different rulings on this, or why are there two different applications on this?
We're not even looking at the same thing.
Yeah, so I think...
Why not?
It's because they're expanding on the front.
This pavement here is within the side setback requirement, and we're telling the prior applicant that they couldn't build a driveway within that side setback requirement. Where's the difference between that property and this property?
Well, he would be creating a non-conformity.
And there, then, I agree with that, and I understand that, then is this an existing non-conforming condition?
That existing pavement absolutely is on the side.
So then by, if then, they were to remove the pavement and install this garage, wouldn't they be relieving a non-conforming condition?
They would be relieving, but they would still be encroaching within the setback, the side setback. It's not apples to apples, they're building a new structure then within the side setback.
My understanding is pre-existing non-conformities have been grandfathered, but now when we...
When you change them.
When we change and with the new rules, then it becomes a bigger issue.
But when we've had prior cases before, we have said that if they relieve the non-conformity, then they didn't need to require it.
And that's one other thing you're leaving out is the character of the neighborhood. In some neighborhoods, and it's...
And I understand, this is to me is a different...
I guess, yeah, John, the thing that I'm wondering on this, whether it's the difference between driveway versus a structure, although I guess they consider driveway as a structure?
A paver, pavers are a structure.
Yeah, absolutely.
But isn't it also an issue that it's closer to the road in front of the house?
Well, that's a, that's a different request, that's an additional variance request that they're asking for.
Right, but if they had that and then did away with the pavement, it would remove the lot coverage issue.
The lot would go.
Only had to remove about 10 feet of the pavement to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very small variance, but yeah.
Right.
But I work in a lot of towns, so I'm always interested in these things, but the driveway is considered, has to be, can't be in the side setback?
That's a 10-foot requirement from a property line for a driveway.
Okay, but that's not, so that's 10 feet, but that's for a driveway, but that's not, this is a 25-foot setback required to a building.
It's a structure, so that's why I said we're not comparing apples to apples because we're talking about...
The prior case then was relative to the driveway?
Right, absolutely.
But a structure would have to be further back than that driveway?
Yes.
Yes, because...
Okay, that answered my question. That answers my question.
So in this case, this pavement is actually...
I'm also trying to answer my question. It would have to be further back than the prior case for a structure with a foundation than it would be for a driveway.
Right.
That answered my question.
I heard Chris.
I think the definition of driveway includes, or excuse me, the definition of structure includes a driveway.
I believe pavers are a structure, I know that.
They are for lot coverage, but I'm not sure that's...
But they are not considered a structure.
What are?
They have their own setback requirements.
What do?
Driveways, which are generally...
Pavers are a structure. I know pavers are a structure.
Yep, see?
And pavers and driveways are the same.
Right, but what I'm saying is the parameters for setbacks for driveways are different than a whole garage.
Yes, that's what I heard you say. Yes, that's what I heard you say, right.
Right, so my...
I agree with that. It's the, there isn't a setback requirement for structures, there's a setback requirement for buildings, principal building or accessory building.
Good, and that clarifies my question. Thank you for indulging me.
No, I think that's a good question to raise, I'm glad you did, and I'm glad we just worked through it.
Right. So based on that, existing pad is not then moved in its required setback, it's far enough away.
The only issue that had that I would have is that it can't be accessed with a vehicle, do you really need it?
Yeah, I'd love to ask the owners what they might be doing with it, but that's just...
Because you don't need to take much away to get 0.28 percent of the way.
Like I said, we could chop off the corner and we'd be there. Yes, I agree, that's, when I do the figuring, that's how honest I am.
And, and you know, we, our charge is to try to minimize the number of variance requests or the size of a variance, and that's the only reason I would think that might be a way to get around one of the variances. May?
Are they planning another door in the back of that garage out, the back door?
Like just a past door? No. No, there's one, gonna be off the, off the side.
Is the issue of that pad something you could discuss with them?
I could discuss anything with them, certainly.
It would be helpful to know too with the neighbors, you know, just to get some feedback from some of the neighbors too.
We kept the public hearing open, we got a chance to discuss that with them, if they then...
And I'd also, in conjunction with that, would like to get some feedback whether that paver is comfortable or not comfortable, if we're going to hold it open and we're going to ask them about the...
I know they've, I mean, they've put this thing on hold to get, you know, they've got a contractor that's ready to go. How about if we do this? How about if you say in your approval, which I hope you're going to approve, that that approval was granted based on us removing enough of that pavement to not require it?
We've done that before, yes.
I've been on the zoning board too, so I've...
Why can't we just deny that that portion of the variance?
I can do the lot coverage.
It's the only way you can fix it.
See, you could withdraw the request for the third variance.
Yes, I could.
And that becomes, that becomes...
And I'm sure they would be fine with that, yes.
I think that would be the way to do it, is just withdraw that request, you have the other two requests.
And we could submit a drawing showing what we're planning to do with that.
Oh, right. Strictly speaking, we're supposed to make our decision based on drawings, which we have in hand, but I think everybody else would be comfortable with...
You refer to Chris Nansen.
You just have to change your standard condition saying, you know, it's based on the plans and drawings and has to conform with the following exception, and just specify it.
Right. So is that something you think they would be willing to do?
Absolutely, yeah.
Anything, let's see, we didn't have anything from the audience anymore from the board? Do you have anything board you'd like to add?
No, no, just a question.
Again, when we'll close the public hearing, sixty-two days to make the decision, you're welcome to stay around, we will, if that's just tonight, I think.
Terrific, so who would I call on the board to send my...
Shawna, I think.
Shawna?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Time to go to school, we'll work on it.
Okay, the next one, Nathan and Jasmine Morris, owners of property at 5146 Overlook Lane, requesting area variance to erect a six-foot fence, six-foot high fence, when four feet is the maximum, two-foot variance is being requested. Yes?
So yes, so because our property is on the corner and surrounded by three roads, the way the code currently reads is anything on this side all the way up to the road is considered front lawn. So what that means is if we were to install a privacy fence in our backyard, you know, this could be a six-foot, this could be a six-foot, and then at this point, it's over the four, and then over here to the four. And so we're requesting a variance so that the entire backyard can actually be a six, so the whole thing would be six-foot. Oh, there's the other, should we...
Yeah, this is what you sent me.
Yep.
You let me know what, or what you want to say of what you'd like to do.
Yeah, so yeah, this is a good summary of what we'd like to do. If you look at the survey map, at least according to the fence contractor's book, you have 41 feet along the house in this direction, which works out to be about 10 feet back from Overlook Lane there, and even with the additional fence, additional height, it's far enough back from the road where the stop sign won't be blocked, so there won't be any, there won't be any visibility issues with the stop signs located up here. And that's, the same goes with, at the corner there where the stop sign is, we plan to be 10 feet back from the sidewalk, so even when you're stopped at the stop sign, you have full visibility of Buffalo Street Extension there, which is kind of a blind corner anyways, but you'd have still have the same visibility as you would have if there were no, if there were four-foot fence. One of the reasons we, like the idea of the four-foot fence, of course, the addition of privacy, but also, I'm somewhat concerned that the combination of six-foot to four-foot might not be somewhat unsightly, especially with the transition being one-third of the back, you know, the fence that would be facing Buffalo Street Extension. Yeah, so that's the summary of our request, I don't know if any of you have any questions.
Do we have any variances we've given for height of fences over there?
So I'm not aware of any variances, but...
I think there's some fences that are six feet.
Right, as far as like the, you know, the character of the neighborhood, there's two fences, two or three down towards the city that are six-foot, and I believe, I think this one might be four-foot, but this one here, I'm pretty sure it's six-foot. So it wouldn't be out of character, you know, for the neighborhood.
When you say down closer to the city, within this development?
Yes.
You're saying a few houses down?
Like, I'm going to scroll, but, assuming this picture's up to date, yeah, so down here, both of these fences down here are six-foot. You know, the difference there is that that's, because, you know, that's their backyard, you know, so code says they can have six-foot fence there, whereas our property is, you know, front and backyard.
There is an easement that runs up here?
I spoke with Highway Superintendent, I'm forgetting his name, sorry.
Jim Fletcher.
Jim Fletcher, yes.
And what did he say about that?
He said that he doesn't, apparently it's not really enforced, I guess, or it's not something they're super concerned about, but he did recommend that we come 10 feet back from the sidewalk, just because at some point they need to improve drainage and maybe dig up that sidewalk, so he wanted to ensure that if we were going to go to the, you know, to install some fence, we didn't have to have it taken down, and that had to happen in the future.
Could you show me where the fence is going again?
Well, that's...
Thank you. What type of fence you're putting up?
Actually, I was just about to bring that up. So when I put the application in, I believe I listed vinyl fencing, but since I put that application in, we've actually gotten a few quotes and saw how much more expensive vinyl fencing is, so what we plan to do is pressure treat this dog year fencing, and once, I think, we're also by the contractor, at least you have to wait a year until you can finish it anyway, but once we do finish it, we plan to finish it well. So it'd be, what would it fence, with the dog year how?
I guess the question is, you know, could you get away with a four-foot fence?
The concern I have with the four-foot fence is one of the reasons we want fences for our dog, and I'm not entirely convinced they couldn't clear a four-foot fence if they really wanted to. You know, if that's what ends up being the only option, we'll, we're gonna, we need a fence no matter what because we have a daughter, and you know, Buffalo Street's pretty busy, so we don't want her out there playing without a fence. It would be nice to have the additional privacy, obviously this is an entrance to a pretty big development, so there's quite a bit of traffic that comes in there, and it would be nice to have those extra couple feet of privacy there in addition to the overall look of the fence.
So how far, I mean, the whole, like you have two front yards, this side?
Yeah, so, from, so you have this whole area here as a corner. So from here over to backyard, up here forward from there, there are three front yards.
And then the actual front yard, right? And the front...
And then our actual front yard.
Yeah, and then your actual front yard.
Because it's a corner, so the two streets are mentioned.
That's interesting, I never even thought of that.
Well, this is unique, you know, there's three.
Yeah, I know, that's...
You know, we, with our dogs, we walk around the neighborhood quite a bit, and I've heard from, you know, other folks in the neighborhood that, you know, that they had the same thing with their corner lots, and I can certainly appreciate in certain situations how putting a four, a six-foot fence on a corner lot might impact, you know, a neighbor's view or, you know, the overall feel of, you know, the neighborhood. I just, in this case, at least to me, it seems like a six-foot fence would seem out of the... I just, in this case, at least to me, it seems like a six-foot fence wouldn't seem out of the ordinary as it is entirely in our backyard, despite the fact that everyone's on a side street.
You have, have you talked to your neighbors? Do we have anything from neighbors about this?
I, I don't know if you've received anything.
I haven't received anything.
We, the only, so the neighbor on this side, we, you know, we speak with regularly, and I plan to talk to them about how they want to handle, whether they want the fence up to the property line or if they want us to have a certain setback, you know, that's something I want to talk to them about. But I've not yet talked to them about this side just because I didn't, I wasn't sure that that necessarily...
They only technically have one. Right? So you haven't, you didn't speak with the neighbor that you talked with them?
No, the neighbors on the other side, the ones that I think it would affect directly, I've actually, I have a map, but I don't know if you can outside, so I just don't want to talk to them.
Do they have a fence?
Do they have a fence? No, they don't have a fence actually, no.
So they'll be coming the next time.
Out of the town, with, through ordinance, four-foot I thought was the standard, but I guess it isn't. It's six. Is there, is it delineated in town code?
Four-foot is...
Standard?
Standard.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eight feet in commercial, four feet...
And what's the rationale for that? I mean, I, I understand a lot of people have dogs that can jump and, or, or they think they can deer and all that, but what's the rationale, do you think, with the town code? It predates you and me being around, but, you know, because that's what's been, been established for so long. Why do they, they settle on that particular...
I, I mean, I've worked in many municipalities, four feet is standard. And I'm thinking because of, you know, children, also aesthetics, cost. But yeah, there are big dogs that would jump over it, absolutely. And, you know, they don't, at four feet, you don't block views generally. You keep that vista wherever it is open. So that's, I would say, most urgent minds, like we...
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the administration that's here? At home, may have lost everybody at home by now. Are you comfortable with closing the public hearing at this time?
Yep.
Then we have sixty-two days to make a decision. We're likely to do it tonight. You're welcome to stay around for a deliberation.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, let's see. The next one that we had on the agenda was withdrawn, the TSC one. So that should shorten things up a little bit.
Couple minutes, I reckon.
We have a town manager here, this, Doug, do you want us to go ahead in your thing at this point? This is under town, as you said, yes, or...
Ah, I guess.
...for the town manager.
So you can get out of here, is that what you have?
I'm sitting there responding to emails, so, hey, everybody, great to see you. Great to see you very much.
Nice.
It's on, turn it on.
So everybody can hear. There you go. How about that? Amazing. So, great to see everybody. I have filed before you an interpretation application. I know that you don't see those very often, so let's just talk about that for a quick second, and then I'll do just a quick introduction. And I was talking with the chairman earlier. I know you don't want to go into a lot of detail tonight, so we can talk about that more next month, but just kind of want to introduce it to you. So New York State Town Law 267B actually authorizes the zoning board to specifically orders requirements, decisions, interpretations, and determinations. And it says, "The Board of Appeals may reverse or affirm wholly or partially or modify the order requirement decision interpretation or determination as in its opinion ought to have been made in the matter by the administrative official charged with the enforcement of, in this case, the town code." So you're authorized to do interpretations per New York State Town Law 267B, and there's four basic types of interpretations that are generally done, the order information relative to that. Shauna, can you do me a favor and just pass this out for me? Those four are, the New York State Department of State put together a little training packet for zoning board and planning board, and I know that these don't come along very often, so I just wanted to give you some homework, some reading material that you could take home and read through this. But specifically on page eleven, you're welcome, specifically on page eleven.
I feel like we get a lot of them, you know, I, I, you know, I think, I don't know, it feels like we do.
Specifically on page eleven, it, it points out the four basis for interpretations. You can base an interpretation on past decision, on record of a governing body's discussions, the ordinary meaning of a term, or common sense interpretation. So those are the four basic, it gives you a lot of broad discretion relative to, that's page eleven is where that is. So that, that gives you broad, broad discretion in making a decision relative to the interpretation. So as the town manager, I actually take an oath of office, just like you all do, just like Shauna does, to uphold, uphold the town code. Additionally, the town board directs me per New York State, or per the town code, it's also backed up by New York State Town Law, in a resolution that they adopt each year, where I'm authorized to make decisions in between meetings of the town board relative to the day-to-day operations. So that includes making sure that we're following the town code. And so I filed this interpretation on this application specifically for a couple of key points. Four, there are four general points is what I would say. There's two that I want to focus on, I'll tell you about in a second, and one particularly I really would like you to pay attention to. So the four general points are, and, and in the interpretation request that I passed along to you, I have labeled them like one, one A, there are one B, then there's a two, three, and four. So one pertains to dimensions at the road, generally speaking. Two pertains to subdivision along a non-adjacent private drive. That's very specific because that's what this application is. Number three, which I think is the most important one, I need to ask you guys to pay attention to, pertains to the planning board having the authority to waive zoning code. And number four pertains to subdivision along a private right-of-way. So point number three and point number four, the two most important ones, I want to ask you to pay the most attention to, and there's two key words that those come down to, the word "may" and the word "unless." And so if you give me just a quick second, I just want to talk about those for a quick second. So point number one relates to the determination says proposed, can you pull up that site plan for me when you get a chance? Point number one, the zoning officer's determination talked about Lot 1 doesn't meet the minimum road frontage requirement of 220 feet on a public road. The town code actually doesn't define public road. So the, the concern here is, there's a couple of different things. Point 1A in this category, and I'm just going to touch on these very, very briefly because these aren't the most important ones that I want to ask to have you pay attention to. Point 1A is the, the subdivision plaque clearly shows that the single-family dwelling does not currently meet the town code, that it is 41 feet from the road when 60 feet front setback is required. So right off the bat, it's a pre-existing non-conforming parcel, right? I mean, because it doesn't meet it, but the determination just doesn't say that. No big deal. It's, they're not increasing the degree of non-conformity. One B relates to the 225 feet of lot width on a three-acre minimum lot size. The interesting thing about this is, after I started digging into this, our zoning schedule, one, specifically, when it, when you look at the zoning schedule and it says agriculture uses and structures, and it says minimum lot size area, minimum lot width, dash. That doesn't help me. It probably doesn't help you guys either. I would recommend you just refer that back to the town board and tell them to look at that. One C relates to lot width, and I want to talk about that more under lot, point number four, so I'm going to skip that one for right now. Point number two relates to the determination that the applicant is proposing frontage along a private drive. The thing about this is, the applicant attested, I believe, or at least notified the zoning officer that they were going to be providing information that they had access to the piece of parcel that they are adjacent to, and I just want to walk over here for a quick second and point this out. So you see, there's three very, very tiny, thin parcels here. The applicant owns the middle one. They don't own the one closest to the parcel that they're trying to subdivide and claim that is their road frontage. That's why I said, the point being, and I want to read it because I wrote it down specifically, a non-adjacent parcel. They don't have the frontage on their own lot. It's a non-adjacent parcel, and they haven't provided proof that they have access to that. If they provide a letter, provide an easement, that's a different story, but they haven't provided that, right? So that was point two. Point number three is, I think, the most important point that I have to ask you guys to take a look at, and I want to just read a couple very specifics here. The zoning officer's determination says, "New York State Town Law enables the planning board to waive..."
It wasn't on.
Maybe the battery's dying.
There you go.
I think it's going to die. The, it said, New York State, the plan, or the zoning officer's determination says, "New York State Town Law enables the planning board to waive, if reasonable, any requirements, gadda, gadda, gadda." So the zoning determination, I'm just going to read it one more time. "New York State Town Law enables the planning board determination to waive." When you actually look at that section of New York State Town Law, New York State Town Law 274A5 waiver of requirements, it says, "The town board may further empower the authorized board." So the town board may authorize the planning board to waive that, but the town code of the town of Canandaigua does not do that. So for the town of Canandaigua Planning Board, they do not have that authority unless the provisions thereof are modified by the planning board pursuant to Town Law 278, which is cluster subdivision. So that's section specifically 174 and 19B. And this is, and specifically when you look at chapter 174.1, "The planning board is authorized to grant subdivision approval pursuant to New York State Town Law 276, 77, 278, and chapters 115, 165, and 220 of the town code." So that means the planning board has the authority to do a subdivision, provided that all the zoning codes are met, unless, that's that word, unless, the provisions thereof are modified pursuant to Town Law 278, which is the cluster subdivision or conservation subdivision. So in other words, the planning board can, as long as it meets all the code for the zoning, the planning board can do a subdivision as long as it all meets. Or if they're doing a conservation subdivision, they can basically change the zoning. This isn't a conservation subdivision. Therefore, that's why I'm asking you to overturn the zoning officer determination on this specific point, that the planning board does not have the authority to waive zoning code, because this...
Can I interject for a minute? Just, just to be very clear, our town board has granted our planning board the authority to waive requirements for a subdivision, which is contained in chapter 174, and has granted the planning board the authority to waive two sets of requirements in our zoning code. They pertain to site plan application and special use permits. So I'm assuming you're all going to go home and research this, which I recommend. You are going to see that the planning board can waive things. They cannot waive zoning requirements such as anything contained in Schedule 1 of our zoning code or 220-9, the actual dimensional and specific requirements of zoning. That's for a zoning board. The only people, the only board that can waive zoning requirements is the zoning board.
And that's specifically 174-19B, that's what I was reading earlier. "Lot sizes and dimensions shall not be less than those specified in chapter 220 zoning of the town code of the town of Canandaigua unless the provisions thereof are to be modified by the planning board pursuant to Town Law 278." So that's what Chris is referring to.
Do we have all the backup that you've just talked about?
It's in, it's actually in here. It's in the pack. That's specifically under number three. That's the most important one.
Not just that, I'm saying you just referenced a couple others, like I heard you say 175.
Yeah, I put it, I wrote it right in here, so it's in there, so you can read through it, yep. And then the fourth point being, whether or not the planning board is authorized to grant subdivision along a private right-of-way. This is going to be something I think that'll be discussed probably more at the ordinance committee and probably more at the town board. You know, I think that, you know, I worded this question differently because it feels like throughout multiple sections of the code, my opinion is, that the planning board is authorized to grant subdivision along a private way, right-of-way, because the town code references lot width. And when you start looking through the specific definitions, right-of-way is defined, the lot width is defined at the right-of-way. So that information is all in there. But I think one of the most important ones I really wanted to ask you to look at is that number three. I think that one is a very important piece because in this particular instance, and there's another one, I think, that's the exact same thing. If you find that the planning board does not have the authority to waive the zoning requirements outside of conservation subdivision, that means that these applicants need to come back to you for a variance request or modify their costs. Determined with that, I'll leave it at that, just kind of giving you a...
Yeah, I, I asked if you would give us sort of an introduction to this because this is one place where if there were still an attorney sitting here at this, at this, uh...
Well, we have one, it's just, you know.
Anyway.
It would be easier when there were two of us.
Yeah, right?
Right.
It's never easier when you have two attorneys.
That's a first, actually, and all, yeah.
Only one of us was billing you. So I would recommend, and I think the, the points Doug raises, number one and two, and I'll be prepared to discuss this with you and give you my advice, but in your homework, the answers lie with the definitions section of our town code 1-17. Definitions of public right-of-way, private right-of-way, road, frontage, lot width. Go, go right through all the definitions is my recommendation. It'll take you 10 minutes and, and see what they say.
That's good advice. I tried to include those in the packet for you so that you could reference those as you're going line by line through those. So those are all copied directly from the code. Anytime where there's the, that little wall, the, the little subscribe squiggly sign there with the code, that's copied and pasted from the code, so.
That's where your answer is going to lie, on those point one and point two.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we will be discussing this further next month after we've all done our homework. Okay.
Is this your agenda?
I mean, I lost my agenda and all the paper was...
Oh, does it?
I'm going to pursue it. Where mine went?
Do you want to give general...
Oh, yeah, I got it. Variants. Well, I think you can probably go ahead and go back to our public hearings.
Okay.
Finish the rest of the board business, I think, after that. I think what we try to do is when an applicant stays, we try to go through that one first, and I think... Morris is here, we'll talk about Overlook Lane and the variance for the fence. Comments or corrections, comments?
I didn't even know the height requirement, to be truthful, so I didn't realize.
I see a lot of six-foot fences for a reason.
Yeah.
I just, I'm unclear. Usually when we, the variance is requested, there's a hardship. And I'm not clear what the hardship is. You know, maybe I wasn't listening well, or it wasn't stated clearly that I understood. Maybe the board can help me on this.
I think it's, I think, to me, a lot of it is where the location of the lot is, but I, I mean, how strange to have three different definitions for the front yard. No one would have a problem with someone wanting a fence in their backyard at six foot, and that's really what he's trying to do, but from a legal standpoint, he can't. So, I mean, I think this is, I don't think it's an unreasonable variance.
My, my only concern, and with the drives, I think, is it's pulled back far enough from the sidewalk that it will allow, you know, good visibility of the stop sign and of traffic coming either way when you are stopped.
I, I mean, maybe if it is granted, maybe Jim Fletcher should comment on, you know, there has to be something to draw a gem on this. He'd be the one that would have an, you know, input on visibility for a highway. And they're busy highways right there.
Yes. And I guess it could be approved based on approval from him.
Yeah, absolutely. We have seen him and, correct?
We don't, we've seen it and wants to enter the planning board that you made.
But we can absolutely condition that as part of the permits permit prior to the addition.
I'm comfortable with that. Does it recall any questions, then?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We, we, uh, arrange your questions.
Nathan and Jasmine Lawrence, owners of property at 5146 Overlake Lane, are requesting an area variance to erect a six-foot fence. Six-foot fence height when four feet is the maximum, two-foot height variance. Do I just read it out?
No, just read each name.
Okay. Uh, John Casey?
Yes.
Bob Billiard?
No.
Dave Emmerich?
Yes.
Ellie LaHoy?
Yes.
Chip, Chip Salem?
Yes. Ask them. Our usual conditions are that the, it's been approved based on material presented to us tonight, and previously presented to us, and you have the dates on that material.
Yes.
Yeah. And when we make an approval, project has to be completed within one year. The only other thing with this is I think we'll condition it on approval from Jim regarding access.
Yeah, so Jim and I would suggest that we condition the issuance of the building permit upon approval of the plan.
Sounds good.
Her physicality.
Anything else on that one?
Thank you. Thank you for the great graphics.
All right. Probably we could go to, I'm probably among the listeners. People still hear from that. Okay, thoughts on this?
Is Chris still on the phone?
Badler?
Chris, you're there?
Right here.
Well, I asked the question, can he park his car there without the pavement? The reality is, if we go ahead and approve this, and he puts pavement there, he still legally can't park a car there, correct? That's within ten.
I think he can't store a car there.
Right. He couldn't, I mean, if we regulated every car that parks on the side of the house. Right. Would you say store? Chris, you mean, you can't keep your, we're talking.
This came up years and years ago, and my advice to, I don't even think Chris Jensen was the code enforcement officer, I think was to look at the totality of the circumstances, and, you know, he sort of addressed it with his boat. You know, does it sound like that was a boat being stored there? No. But, you know, if he had a boat winterized and it was parked there for, you know, weeks at a time, or the entire season, that's clearly storage. But a registered licensed vehicle, operable licensed vehicle, that's being, you know, moved in and out of the driveway? That's not storage, that's parking, and you can park in a driveway.
Okay, so the only difference is, is the fact that it's either paved or not.
Yeah.
You know, I guess my, my question would be, let's say that we turn this down. There's nothing to have them continue to, you know, use that area for access to the back of the backyard. Shit, it's wet, mess things up. I guess you could still park their truck there, I guess.
What about, I mean, I know we had to address doing up, you know, going the other route. I know it's wet there, but I mean, can't be, there's a driveway on, on that side that seems to be okay, so I mean, not, it's.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be really going around.
It wouldn't be going around.
I think it would be disruptive more.
It's really close, though. You know, I'm not a good sign.
I think the hardship is self-created in some cases. We deal with an electric car, which was a choice. Not using the inside of the garage, that's a choice. And I, again, I'm not totally, I don't know if I totally understand why he couldn't go to the other option. But I do think, no matter what we do, he could continue to park and create the ruts. And the thing about neighbors hearing the sound of the, of the car and all that, and, and I get it with the echo and all that. But I don't think, no matter what we do, that we can, we can stop that from happening. I, I think that that.
Yeah, their purview.
Right. I, I think that that's an issue that you have to work out more with your neighbor, because whether or not he's allowed to have the gravel, is it gravel pad, as they would call it? Or not, I think that the vehi, there, I have every reason to believe that he'll continue to park a vehicle in that, in that slot.
John?
I, along with Bob, think that because he has three cars, or because he bought an electric vehicle, his problem shouldn't automatically become the neighbor's issues. And I'm not comfortable with it, just.
My thought I got, I mean, I, there's a couple of people who have electric cars down our way. One of them I know has run a line out from their house and have a little, you know, a two-GI thing which they love their 220 into. And those are available.
Run it to the turnaround.
Away from the house, and to park it in turnaround.
Yeah, there is alternatives, there are solutions that he could consider besides just this one, in my opinion.
Oh, but he also did mention that he has a future idea of doing something different. There was reason that he wanted it, but that's, you know, again, so we get another variance request for his next project.
And if it's access to the backyard, that's, you know, that's one thing. But if it's parking directly next to the neighbors, that's different issue. My mind.
Call question. There's a more weird reaction to this.
That was, yeah, sorry. Uh, let's see. Applicant is requesting an area variance, size setback of one point six feet, twenty ten feet is the minimum. Eight point four, oh, variances. John Casey?
No.
Bob Billiard?
No.
David Emmerich?
No.
Ellie LaHoy?
No.
Chip Salem?
No.
Okay. I think, as depicted in the drawings that we've received, the benefit to the applicant does not outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood. And I think this is a significant variance in this nine out of ten, basically. The, I think there are ways that he can do what he needs to do without having to, to have the variance. We talked about extending the electrical, he's got a turnaround there that could be better utilized, I think.
Self-created.
It's part of it.
It's self-created.
It's self-created, yeah.
It doesn't seem to get a lot of support from neighbors.
Maybe they're. Of the neighbor being woken up by the truck starting?
No.
Four thirty.
Yeah. I was gonna mow my lawn at five thirty the other morning.
Anything else that we?
Chris, may I ask you a question while we have you?
I suppose so.
Thank you. So this applicant, as well as another applicant, used how many residences were in the general area that were as much out of variance as this particular case?
Yeah.
So my question to you is, are we to consider that as well as considering whether we have passed any similar variances in that same neighborhood?
Yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Both are to be considered then, right?
Consider both.
Okay.
The, the similar distances, variance or not, pertains to the character of the neighborhood. And I think frequently it's very compelling, and I think you, this particular board, finds that very compelling in a lot of situations. It never is determinative.
Yes.
Previously granted variances isn't determinative, and isn't necessarily, shouldn't be given too much weight because they're given on specific facts and circumstances when compared to other examples. You know, if an entire neighborhood is pre-existing non-conformity and has five-foot front setbacks, just because you're building a house, when, with our zoning code, doesn't mean we should put you twenty feet back. Even if there aren't variances for those five-foot setbacks, the character of the neighborhood is five-foot setbacks. That's just a rough example.
Yep, that's a good example, thank you.
Chris?
I have a question.
Chris, go ahead.
Well, I have a question about that. In terms of when, so Tony Petracini says there's forty houses, kind of like John's example, that are all, you know, on the property line or within, within a feet, right?
Yeah.
About, there's so many, and so are you saying that we're looking at the general character, but specifically, there's instances where the zoning changes. There might be another district that is two houses or two parcels down where the setback changed, so.
Ooh, that's a good point.
Well, I'm just thinking of, you know, because there's some that it just, it changes, or maybe, you know, a third of the lot is in R130 and the rest of it is in RLD. And so, the, yes, the general character, but it's, it's really hard to make those, I think, sweeping, you know, looking at the neighborhood boards. That's why.
And that's precisely why it's a zoning board, not administrative task. You've got to weigh, you know, the opinions of five people as to what the neighborhood is. Frequently, the neighborhood stops at the zoning district. But when it doesn't,
So it does.
you should identify that in the record. This neighborhood consists of from this road to this road, whether there's a zoning district line or not. And I've seen zoning boards really, you know, that's how they make their decisions, and they spend a fair amount of time defining and arguing about what's in the neighborhood and what's not. Not so much of a problem for Canandaigua because the neighborhoods are mostly contiguous with, or co-conominous with the zoning districts. But more urban settings really have to define the neighborhood, and you can do that when that kind of situation, Sean, arises.
I guess in this, in some of the reasons on this one, I think we also have that there are other ways that the applicant could
Right.
put the results in ones. Can you think of anything else on this one, Chris, since I might have that prospect?
Uh, applicant did not submit sufficient evidence to support his contentions. You know, the applicant said he walked down the street and saw forty houses with similar situations, but he didn't have a ruler or a tape measure, so we don't really know.
And he also didn't, you know, verify whether those, I mean, just because the driveways are close to the lot line doesn't mean that there was a house right next door to the, you know, closer to the line as well, so. Of those forty.
Which is what you were trying to ask.
Right. Yeah, it wasn't really. I was trying, yeah, right. That was where my mind was.
Anything else on that one? The last one we have is Brennan Wood.
Can we go back, Jeff, I just want to make sure we got, we had, benefit does not outweigh detriment. Significant variance requests alternatives to request self-created and not sufficient evidence from applicant.
Yeah, I think, one of the keys, there are other, other ways to.
Yep. Hold on, hang on.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Brennan Wood, three, five, sixty-eight, county road sixteen. Especially on this one. You know, just that issue of safety, we have a driveway that's pretty steep too, and I don't walk down my driveway, I'll walk along in the snow coming down, I'm walking the dog, I don't look everywhere.
I have to add the gas all the way into my driveway, so I know what you're talking about.
And that bend that he lives on.
It's tough.
Is a tough bend.
Yeah. It is, actually, if I've come around that corner and it's like, there's a tree there.
And a lot of people are driving at excessive speeds right at that corner, and it's just, it's not safe. It's because they've seen the sign and it says how fast they're going, and think, well, gee, I'm not going fast enough.
I'd like to hear the comments of two of the neighbors.
Oh, yeah, right.
You guys live there, aren't you? You know it.
Well, he did get positive feedback from his direct neighbor to the south.
Yes.
And the neighbor to the north.
He said he had talked with him, and it was a running property.
I thought he presented well.
I do, too.
And that, that counts for something. And he had the answers, he had a good rationale. And I, I think that's what was supposed to be seen. Just as an aside, he has done a very nice job at that property.
Yeah. Well, I was kind of confused at first, I was like, is that a part of the parcel? Because it's a different color, you know, I mean, like usually they are the same color. So I was a little bit like, why is there a line going from one to the other? That's why I was like, that's what I'm hoping.
You call the question one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, applicant is requesting two area variances. Applicant is requesting two area variances. One side setback of four point three feet, one twelve is the minimum. Seven point seven foot variance required. Number two, front setback of thirty-four point eight point sixty feet is the minimum. Twenty-five, forty-two feet variance required.
Coachable moment?
Sure.
Do you want her to call both variances simultaneously?
Um.
I'm only asking that because the next one coming up.
Why don't we separate them? It's a little bit hungry.
First variance is on the side setbacks.
Do you want her to say Shelby, how do you want her to state that? Shelby applicant be granted?
Sure.
Yeah, Shelby applicant be granted a variance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shelby applicant be granted seven point seven foot side setback area variance. John Casey?
Yes.
Bob Billiard?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip, Chip Seale?
Yes.
Number two. Uh, Shelby applicant be granted a twenty-five point two foot setback area variance. John Casey?
Yes.
Bob Billiard?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Seale?
Yes. Okay, as depicted in the descriptions and drawings, uh, provided at this meeting, the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood, therefore the variance is granted. Board's decision is based upon facts presented during the public hearing. I would say that the granting of variance will increase the safety of the property, and minimize risk of, of falling on a steep driveway as well as improving the access to success, the safe, safe access to County Road sixteen. Will not change the character of the neighborhood. There are similar setbacks, lot coverage is. I think another thing is that drainage from the property will be improved by the improvements, uh, that go along with the change in the driveway and, uh, by, by.
Yeah, the safety and the environment are, are strong in this, this case.
And they need the extra space to have an actual, so they can pull out directly instead of, you know, backing out to on a corner.
And I guess the condition would be, uh, would be let's forget the, one has to, it has to be done within a year.
Less than one month of land.
Right. More than twenty percent, yeah. That sounded all right, Chris?
Yeah.
If, yeah. With you sitting on my shoulder here.
Yeah, right.
These are convenient.
Labor speaks most of the time. Okay, um, the last one then, um, one on Middle Cheshire Road, discussion there. This one.
Yeah.
The only thing I had some reservation about was the side setback. Just in terms of, it's encroaching on the neighbor, although the neighbor had an opportunity to be here if they wanted to be to express any concerns. It might be considered improving it a little bit by the fact that we could condition the removal of the asphalt back to uh, the side face of the garage and, um, but that was the only thing that caused me to pause a little bit, just that.
I wrote down that a possible loose end was the neighbor, or not, no neighbor comment, and that's the only thing that was hanging there for me, and, uh.
Yes, see, how far do you go to get the comment?
I, I, yeah, and then I thought.
Neighbors are, know we're talking about it tonight. But yet, we set up these codes because we don't want people encroaching on that space, right? Particularly when we're, I don't want to say, Middle Cheshire is not your suburban neighborhood. I mean, the houses are somewhat far apart, there are a few that are somewhere, there's a few that are closer, but these codes were set up to maintain separation.
Yeah.
And we're encroaching on that separation, we're not encroaching on it by inches like we did, um, County Road sixteen, we're encroaching by feet. So that causes me a little bit of heartburn, but.
No, we will take away their ability to park their car closer.
Yeah. Car will be not parked in that space.
It's not out of the character of the neighborhood, I mean, there's others that are closer than that, it's, it isn't.
And Middle Cheshire doesn't have a single identity because the length of it, it's so interesting, so you have to go within sections of the road, and within that section, I totally agree there.
Yeah, towards farms.
Yep.
I mean, I had absolutely no issue with the other two, the front setback and lot coverage on that.
Well, they're gonna do away with lot coverage requests.
Yeah, by removing some of the asphalt, right, so that becomes a moot point, but, you know. I guess I, I think it's close enough to the rest of them, but I don't think it's immediate to me.
When you look at the aerial, you, what we're going to be getting, it's not, it's really not, uh, that dramatic.
Right, that's a good one.
Can you show me where the house?
Yeah, the door.
Yeah.
It's pretty far away.
That's pretty far. There's a, it's a swale in there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Creates separation also.
Let me, well, let's look at the.
Front.
Is that really town property, one of them?
It is.
Yeah.
I can't.
Future landfill.
What's that?
Future landfill.
Yeah, nice.
Here.
All right. Yeah, I mean, it's really not, I mean, to build the garage, you're not really coming over in, on the, like, on the neighboring property, where the house is, it's not really affecting them.
Chip, how are you, how would you condition the approval for the side setback?
Um, I think it's. Well, it's, I think, I think it's within character of neighborhood.
No, I'm saying in terms of, um, removing the asphalt.
Oh.
So that the asphalt is no closer than.
He's withdrawing the number three.
He said he was withdrawing, and he was gonna call Sean in the morning or something like that.
Yeah, he's gonna remove that request, the third one anyway.
He's gonna remove the asphalt.
Lot coverage.
To where?
To where he doesn't need a variance.
Where he doesn't.
We're not gonna vote on the third, right?
So it was withdrawing, right?
Unless he does that, he's, he's out of code.
So then he still has an opportunity to park next to the garage.
No.
No, it won't be a vote.
Pull it up. Yeah, that wall, there's a wall on the, right there, if you, the way you had it.
Can you pull that up and plan, please?
Yeah.
Where they put the, put the garage where they're gonna put it, it cuts off.
See the pavement, if he puts the back pavement, leaves that pavement there, and that pavement is thirty foot wide, he's still got over a ten-foot section of pavement that he could park his car.
But I think he doesn't have access out, all the way out, does it? Yeah, pavement to be.
Not yet.
Pavement to be removed.
They, you take that triangle out that he's removing, right there too.
Well, then he could technically drive, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, do the same thing that Tony Petrosionis did. Well, now.
Well, now there's a retaining wall there.
There's a retaining wall between the corner of the garage, I think.
It's a little elevated.
But in order to reduce that point to, he still has to cut into the, the blacktop some more, right?
I'll tell you how I would prefer the verbiage. That he removes the pavement such that it is no closer than the nineteen point three-three side setback.
Yeah.
Well, is the rest of the driveway? And then that way.
Right.
He can't park there. I mean, he could if he went all the way around the garage and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, then.
But he could put furniture there and he could put.
Yeah, that way. But I don't think, yeah, there's, I'm not sure.
So actually, they're, so they're taking out, according to him, they're removing that corner anyway, so they wouldn't be able to drive out there.
That was my impression.
Yeah.
Nothing's stopping from putting a stone.
Right.
But I think, I think though the, the distance, let's see. The distance between the corner of the garage.
No, are you, is it easier on, uh, that one to, to show it?
I think when the garage comes out, so you come out over here enough that there won't be enough room to drive a car around.
That was my impression.
That's what he said.
From that little wall.
That was my impression.
They won't be able to access it.
Yeah, but I don't think John's unreasonable that, that we ask for condition that there's no pavement on the, on that side, it's, it ends at the, you know.
And they're gonna have to take, take some of that pavement out anyway.
Well, he said the, yeah, the, the construction people would have to remove it anyway to.
Yeah, the bottom line for me was, there was no hardship ever mentioned for number three, why, why they needed to go, uh, lot coverage above twenty percent.
Well, they're taking that away anyways.
Yeah, if they don't go for that, or we're not voting for it, he's not, and then we condition the side setback.
I think that makes sense.
So John, you're saying everything from here, but where would we take it out?
What I'm saying is, mind if I go up to the screen? Fine. I'm saying that if we don't make them take this out, this piece right here, that they could very easily take our, grab it up there and park it. So what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is that we make them remove the pavement from this point.
To be flush in the garage?
When everything along here, the stuff in this is removed.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I even?
Sure.
Can you, can we ask that as a condition? Because technically that existing pavement is not in violation of the existing code.
They're asking us to approve something that will be outside of code, and we can, and we can condition approval based on some limitation.
Okay.
Also, we're not gonna.
I believe, ask Chris, he's right there.
We're not gonna approve the request for the extra lot coverage. So if that piece of pavement, getting rid of that, I think I'll be eight point two eight percent.
But it'll be interesting, Sean, and maybe with that phone call that he was talking about tomorrow, uh, it'll be more clear to everybody, because I'd hate them to, you know, make a, a move that John was, mentioned that we don't want, that would be bad faith if, uh, I have to walk down through.
But not just him, Bob, it could be whomever buys it, Doug.
That's true, good point, yeah.
And not, and not that they aren't doing it now, because they are, right? They're paving, they're parking all the way over to the edge of pavement. But at least, I think, by asking them to remove that pavement to that point, we're showing some consideration for that spacing for the neighbor to the south.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, in order to get some of their lot coverage down there, you remove the rest of that pavement.
Right.
And like the architect said, there isn't gonna be much of a left and stuff, right? They vote? Do this on individually, so.
So, are we going to make it contingent on them removing that asphalt so it's no closer than nineteen point three-three feet?
Yeah.
What's that, that takes what, ten feet away, or no?
I think probably eight feet.
Eight feet.
Six feet, something like that.
I'm on board. You're saying from the front of the garage, that, from, I mean, right now, we're not into.
We're no closer than nineteen point three-three feet.
So, yeah, because the garage, by, from the looks of the, the plan, it looks like the garage is gonna come over a little bit anyway.
Right.
So, they could just kind of make it flush with the garage or something like that. I mean, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, half of the garage is extending over the front house.
Because it's only a single garage and they're doing this double, so they don't automatically attempt to go over that way.
Okay, well, one at a time.
Applicant is requesting two area variances. Number one, forty-six point five foot set, front setback, one sixty feet is required. Thirteen point five foot variance required.
Shelby be granted, yeah.
Cam, you, right, for the record, you just asked the board, shall we?
Ask us, shall, surely they be recorded.
Oh, Shelby, okay, I'm sorry. Um, John Casey?
Yes.
Bob Billiard?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Seale? Number two, Shelby applicant be granted a, where, listen. A nineteen point three-three foot side setback, one twenty-five feet is required. Five point six-seven foot variance required. John Casey?
Contingent and existing pavement being no closer than nineteen point three-three feet. Yes.
Um, Bob Billiard?
Yes, ditto.
Uh, Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Seale?
Yes. Now, I guess, question I have, he said they would withdraw number three?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we, do we have to say no to it, or do we just say that the applicant is withdrawing it?
If he withdrew it.
Chris?
If he withdrew it.
Okay.
Okay.
Did he, he actually said that?
Yeah, but I thought tomorrow morning he would confirm with you.
Yeah, I thought that he said he was gonna make a telephone.
Damage of your sixty-two days to render a decision and just continue that subpending receipt of a withdrawal.
So we could continue just that one variance request?
Or we could deny it.
Well, technically he won't need it anyways if you're asking him to take out that piece. So it's a moot point.
Yeah, don't deny it.
What's that?
Don't deny it.
That was my idea.
Dave, be nice.
Why wouldn't we deny it based on the second variance?
Because you came to a conclusion with the guy that, you came to an agreement with him that he would submit a withdrawal of it, withdraw, withdrawal of it, and I think you gotta honor your word.
Okay, so tomorrow he can submit in writing that he's withdrawing that third request.
Yeah, and if he doesn't, then at your next meeting, just make sure it gets on the agenda and vote to deny it then.
Okay, all right.
Fifty-two days.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Darn it.
It's more fun having you right here, Chris.
I'm afraid you'd throw stuff at me.
Uh, okay, as depicted in the descriptions and drawings provided at this meeting, uh, benefit to the applicant, uh, does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood, and the variance is granted for number one and number two. Board's decision is based upon facts presented during the public hearing. Granting this variance is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Uh, variance will not change the character of the neighborhood. Think that.
But you, you better had the.
But then I think, I, we'll have to add a third variance was presented, but will be withdrawn by the applicant.
And add your two standard conditions. With the exception, on the, on the second one, or on the first one, I don't know which one it is. Let's say, with the exception of removing the asphalt. And then add a third condition that says, these, both variances are conditioned on removing the asphalt.
Right, okay. Removing the asphalt so that it's no closer than nineteen point three-three feet.
Yeah.
Do we need to put in there, and this would take away the need for the third variance?
It's a good idea.
That would be good for the record, I would think.
Okay. What's, I have to put my, uh.
What are you looking for?
My agenda kind of.
There we go.
I put my computer away, so.
The tabs on or something, anyway. All right, so we got all those taken care of. Ordinance committee referrals?
Are you?
Not yet. Soon.
Now, I, there isn't any time here.
You know, I need to talk to Paul before Monday.
'Cause it says other business, vice chairman. We gotta get that out of there.
What's that?
I didn't hear it.
Who else?
I would like to announce that Mr. John Casey has been appointed, uh, chairman of the ordinance committee.
Yes, John, is are you?
Oh, really?
Ah, nice.
Terrific.
I don't know about that.
But thank you. But we have to delete from the, uh, agenda, the vice chairman.
Oh, right, we do have the vice chair person.
Yes.
You need to do it for a minute.
Yes, so we need a motion to approve April nineteenth minutes.
I don't think I have.
Second, second.
Little favor.
I hope.
All right.
All right.
Um.
I'm, I'm sorry, who's the first?
I made the first.
Yeah, I was like, wasn't the accident.
Dave must have.
I seconded it.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, the two, wait, doesn't, it's just my one, your one, you got me.
I was looking, when we were going over that thing about Doug Way Road, in the minutes, it says that the, um, benefit to the applicant does outweigh, it does say, does not say, that's gotta be, have a not added in there.
Oh, really?
In minutes.
Is that a missing word?
Oh, for the minutes.
January, yeah. Doug Way Road three.
So we should bring those back and should you just make a motion to amend them right now?
Sure, yeah, probably, yeah. So that it reflects the, the.
The, what was the date? January. January.
Jan, oh.
Chip made the motion, Kelly seconded it.
Yeah, January twenty-one.
Yeah, I, it was all the way back to January, I was surprised.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, I went to have it set this afternoon.
And there was a missing not?
Yeah, there was a missing lot.
Good catch. You're on top of these things.
I kept looking, the way we have I and A March. I knew it was three to two.
Yeah.
Couldn't figure out.
That's a good catch.
Huh?
Anyway. Glad you caught it.
Yeah.
Okay, next, next month's agenda.
You will have to just make a determination on the interpretation request from Doug.
So there'd be two interpretations.
We will also be receiving another one from Doug.
It'd be, yeah, today, yeah.
As it relates to Alanda Drive.
Can I, can I do away with the, the vice chair position?
No, I'm here. I'm here, June.
Yeah, good, well.
Not for long.
So we're covering them all in June, not July, right?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Oh, good.
Um, the other one from Doug refers to the Westbrook request upon, off of Alanda.
We knew one of them last night.
And so it'll be interesting. The one's about Doug Way, and the other one's about Westbrook's.
Wonderful.
That's on there, anything else, that could take a whole meeting there.
Right, there, uh, there, uh, there is a property on West Lake Road, West Lake, that these three variances work, same old family, well.
Well, this is the, uh, three, six, one, one.
This is the one with the, the Jocelyn, Jocelyn Gardens, pipe variance, building coverage.
Which, which one's it?
Both sides of that.
Uh, it's two or three north of Butler Road.
Yeah, a little up now.
Okay.
Almost the same.
I mean, it's like, I think it's what, eighty percent lot coverage?
The lot size is three thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah.
High.
Yeah.
They're not changing the footprint.
They're, well.
Are they?
Yeah.
That's the problem.
They are putting in a deck, they're putting a rooftop back, so it's going high.
Same on thirty-one feet. In the PRC meeting, I suggested to Anthony, I guess it was, that they try to work around that, because you're not real fond of branding, particularly something right on the water, thirty-one feet high.
Wait, yeah.
So this is the lot.
What's the address here?
This is thirty-six eleven, forty-one sixteen.
County Road sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, shocking.
One effect you hold, John.
Logistically, it's gonna be very interesting.
Is this, is this the Wolfax property?
This is Jocelyn, I don't know who's owned it before. It's small.
It's small, and they want.
Was this the little green place?
No.
I haven't found that, I don't know.
I know which one you're thinking of, John, I think that one's further down, right, isn't it?
It's right in this, right in here somewhere.
What's that?
The one that's right next to.
The open space.
The open space, and then there's, I think it's the next one after that.
It's not right next to the.
It's not right next to the, it's the next one after, isn't it?
Either one or two.
Two, I think.
I know.
Then I think thirty-six eleven.
It's terrible, I mean. Construction, the structure, that is gonna be amazing, because of how close it is to the road. I mean, I don't know how they're gonna do construction without blocking off the road.
Where? Like, they, it's that close?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's one of those, right on the lake, the road.
So Butler.
Okay.
Here's Butler.
Third house from Butler.
Oh, I know it's, yeah.
Third house north of Butler.
Okay.
How are you gonna get equipment all over there, take a house down and put a new one up? I mean, that would, it's tricky.
I know which one, yeah, I know which one, I saw.
This favor has already opened and stands on the way, thirty-six one line.
To say what the heck?
Just to say what's going on.
What's, what's the, what's the varying?
Height.
Height?
Thirty-one feet.
So, rear setback, uh, front, rear, well, setback can carry it, so it's.
So they're not gonna stay within the footprint, as what?
They're not, no.
Okay, wow.
They're breaking out a, a deck, well.
That's what you call tight, right?
Yeah, that is tight.
We request many additional details at PRC yesterday. So that's the, um, there is an parachute extension, the horse farm. Um, I think the address, the real nice farm.
Yeah.
There, so dividing off the house, we need a variance for the barn setback to the house spot.
They've got a lot of property, right, and it's.
So, that's a bit too dark, you know, well, we haven't, we want the agenda finalized, too, but we just, uh, haven't.
Did you?
Well, into here, so.
Okay.
We'll have it come soon. But I think this one is.
I just, I just can't see, you know, between next door, the amount of space it takes for them to construct a house.
Where are they gonna put all this stuff?
Yeah.
It's expensive, but don't, don't they have a lot across the street?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing.
No.
They don't?
They don't?
No, 'cause look at there's a house.
No. Oh, well.
Yeah, usually, there's some sort of parcel attached across from.
Two up, there's a garage across the street. Yeah, there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
That's gonna be, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's coming.
You can't be sick of it. Yay. You can't be sick of it.
So I, I've got a question when we're done with this part. I, I, um, I feel like I had, went on the wayback machine to grad school, and Doug put this out here, because I don't know what the hell, I've got, I, I don't understand, I.
That's why I couldn't figure out what I was reading.
He was going so fast, and I didn't keep up, but I, I gotta be honest. I'm up for doing analysis, but if it's detective work, where I gotta search all over the place for all these things, that's a different job than analysis.
You want a pay raise, is that what you're saying?
I know, I just don't understand what, what our charge is, how, how. In other words, if you give me something right here, and ask me to analyze it and report back, I could do that.
He wants you to do research before reviewing all these cases.
If it's detective work, I don't know.
Wait, you don't have to do any detective work, I'm not, your charge is not to do detective work.
Understand what's written.
New York State law, so the, this is, this is how zoning boards work. You're, you're authorized to do three things. One, grant use variances. I don't think you've ever done that.
No.
No.
And there's, and there's five use variance standards, similar to the area variance standards. Number two is grant area variances. That's what you do, mostly. And you apply a five tests, a five standard test in order to determine whether or not you should grant that variance.
Right.
Third thing that a zoning board is authorized to do under New York State town law is hear appeals from an administrative officer, in this case, the zoning officer of the town of Kennebago. They're called interpretations or appeals, those, those words are used interchangeably. So the zoning officer made a zoning law determination, and the town manager has appealed from that zoning law determination. So you need to determine whether or not to uphold the zoning law, zoning law determination or overturn it.
So that'll be, uh, a vote of five, the five of us, is that, in the end, is that where this is going?
Yeah, yes.
That is correct.
And that sets precedence, right, Chris?
It tends.
No.
And so the things you'll have to analyze are the zoning law determination and the materials Doug presented you with, his interpretation appeal. You don't have to read the thing he passed out, you can, it's useful information. But what you need to read is the actual appeal letter that he referenced, one, one A, one B, one C, two, three, and four. That's his argument and the zoning law determination, and you're gonna analyze it, and you're gonna listen to your, uh, you know, you're gonna ask me questions, and, uh, we're gonna come to a conclusion.
So where, where is that appeal letter?
Is that, um.
Shauna sent it to us.
Yeah, I, I sent that to you, that has its own CPN number.
Okay.
Okay.
I can send that out again.
It was in one of the emails the other day.
Chris, we are to base our decision only on the information that was presented to us by Doug. I show.
Well, um, you can base your information on anything, but it's really a.
But I, I guess what I'm saying is, we don't need to do any more research other than what was presented to us.
That's correct, but you're gonna have to read the code, the code sections reference, which I think Doug presented to you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and so what this boils down to is, is a code interpretation. You're going to have to tell Doug and Shauna what the code says.
So we do need more information than this and, and the, uh, the appeal letter.
Well, I think Doug's pulled all the code, code things out.
All the code, so I guess, really, the bottom line is, which, should the zoning law determination be overturned? And if that's the case for Doug Way Road, then that application would come back to the zoning boards of deals, right, Chris?
No, other way around. Oh, no, if the zoning board, if the zoning law determination is overturned, then yes, they will need to come back for a variance.
Back, no, they would, well, yes, they would.
So that, that doesn't matter so much, you just, what's in front of you is Doug's interpretation, take a read of that, and then we'll walk you through it next, next week, there's not, you know, I referenced homework, if you're interested in doing it, you know, you should, you should take a look at the definitions, if not, we'll present them to you next week, or next month, and we'll talk through them.
Right, sounds good.
This is similar to what the board did with the interpretation request for the dock.
Boat tax.
With, same, same procedure.
And do we question Shauna during this process?
Okay.
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 Well, we did that one, that was through Ocelake, I remember years ago, I think it was when I first started, and that was pretty, there were like five, five violations, and we voted on. I think we upheld four out of the five, so.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome, right, Chris? 'Cause that, that was, that was quite a few years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was a long time ago.
For what it's worth, this packet that Doug Fitch, um, passed out is a training program on how boards run that's on New York State, it's actually, this is the one I, you, thank you for letting me yours, I went looking for it on the New York State thing, so I need to print this out, and I just bookmark it. The training is actually really useful, it's interactive, that there's a presenter with slides, and they actually pop up little anecdotes and everything else that's not in this printout part. But I think he's just telling us that the training tells you that this is one of our thingies we do.
Doug handed me just the code book when I first came in.
Did he?
Yeah, he made me take it home and read it, and then he goes, do you have it back? I said, I thought it was mine, I mean, it was like.
I think we went to CDs.
Yeah.
That's only.
Yeah.
Is anybody else going Friday to the thing over in Davie?
That was last Friday.[1756.21]